Good evening. Welcome to the May 16th meeting, uh, May 16th, 2022, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time I will call the meeting to order and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a busy agenda tonight and a few people who are in and out at different times. So we're going to be doing a little bit of jumping around, but we'll always start with the wonderful fun stuff of proclamations and presentations. And I'm going to start with a proclamation in recognition of Public Works Week. I think Mark White is here to accept this and we'll get it read and talk about it after. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings and solid waste collection, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be it resolved that I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2021, in the City of Stillwater as Public Works Week and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. Next up, we have a proclamation and recognition of National Police Week. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities throughout the United States, including 81 sworn officers of the Stillwater Police Department, and whereas law enforcement officers have often made the ultimate sacrifice and more than 23,000 officers nationwide have been killed in the line of duty and whose names are included in the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC, and whereas Stillwater Police Officers have continuously gone above and beyond to protect and serve our community members and visitors since inception of the department in 1927, and whereas the citizens of Stillwater and surrounding communities are grateful for our officers and their families for their unwavering dedication to public service and to safeguard democracy. Now therefore be it resolved that I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, on behalf of the City Council and its citizens officially recognize May 11th through 17th, 2022, as National Police Week in the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma. Chief Watts? Say a few words or you can...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for all that you do.
I'm glad that we do those proclamations. Public Works and Officer, Police Officers here in Stillwater provide such a tremendous service to our community and I hope that you take an opportunity over this week to, to thank them, our Public Works Officers and our Police Officers here in Stillwater. All right, councilors, first, next up is the Consent Docket. Are there questions, comments or a motion on the Consent Docket?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the Consent Docket. Please vote. Consent Docket is passed with a vote of four to zero. Okay. We are going to jump now in our agenda down to item nine, Resolutions. We have two resolutions on the agenda tonight, CC 2217 and 2214 regarding bond financing. Melissa Reams will come introduce this discussion for us.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Melissa Reams, Deputy City Manager. This evening, we are here to sell bonds to fund our new fire station number two, and I wanted to take a minute to introduce our financial advisors and our Bond Counsel are here with us this evening. This is the first time the city has sold bonds in the last 20 years. So this is kind of one of those momentous events. I have Zach Robinson and Chris Gander here from Bank of Oklahoma, and they are our financial advisors, and Don Kaiser is our Bond Counsel. And Chris and Zach would like to say just a few words to you.
Thank you. Before you do, I'll just note that Councilor Clark has left the meeting.
Good evening. Uh, it's great to be here. Zach Robinson, um, you're getting a copy of the bid summary. We accepted bids this morning until 10:30 on your behalf. First, I just want to highlight the rating. Uh, your credit rating is not an easy process. There's a lot of, um, um, information that gets asked for, and I just want to say that your team, um, did a wonderful job representing the city on the rating call. Um, your CFO, your finance director, your counsel, uh, just did an outstanding job of handling the rating process. Um, you know, the, the, uh, your rating of double A minus, first of all, is a really strong credit, but also the outlook was stable, which we've done a lot of these kinds of, of sales and a lot, many issuers have had a hard time in the COVID era and have had their ratings changed on them lowered. Um, your credit rating and your stable outlook were a really strong outcome, and it helps us to get more bidders who want to buy the bonds at the lowest rate possible. So all the hard, just the time and effort, um, that goes into just managing the city's financials translates directly into that rating, which helps you obtain the lowest rate possible on your bonds for your patrons. So, so we just wanted to highlight how strong of an effort your team made on your behalf. On the bids itself, this is incredibly close sale. Um, we rarely see sales this close, less than, less than a basis point in total. So, um, as you can see on the bid tab, the far right column, we have to award the bonds on the true interest cost, which is a time value, um, calculation, and that's in the statutes. RW Baird, which is a very, um, active firm who buys a lot of bonds in Oklahoma, submitted a little bit of 3.935956, followed very closely by Huntington Securities out of Chicago at 3.941097. So this is an extremely competitive sales. What we like to see, it, it lets us know that you found the lowest rate possible in the marketplace today. So it's a really strong outcome. Um, and we've also had many sales this month, and it's been harder to find bidders on bonds because most people are selling their bonds right now, they're not buying their bonds. And so we've seen a lot of very active firms not bid on, um, sales that they normally bid on. So the four bids is also a really strong outcome, and I think it's indicative of the credit profile of the city. So just a really fantastic outcome for you and your patrons, and for the awarding of the bonds, we would certainly recommend that you award to RW Baird out of Milwaukee at a TIC or True Interest Cost of 3.935956. If you have any questions on the rating process or the bond sale process, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. Councilors, any questions? On the agenda, we have resolution number CC dash 2022 dash 17, which is a resolution awarding general obligation limited tax bonds, series 2022, in the sum of $9 million by the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, to the lowest and best bidder. There are comments, questions or a motion on the resolution?
Should be a motion to adopt, right? Sorry, let me find the number. What number are we on there? Motion to adopt resolution CC dash 2022 dash 17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. Resolution is adopted by a vote of three to zero. Thank you so much for your work. We appreciate your help in the process. Our next resolution on this item is 2022 dash 14, which is a resolution providing for the issuance of general obligation limited tax bonds, series 2022, in the sum of $9 million by the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, authorized at an election duly called and held for such purpose, prescribing the form of the bonds, providing for registration thereof, providing levy of an annual tax rate for the payment of principal and interest of the same, and fixing other details of the issue. This is a resolution that does the mechanical work of issuing, um, these bonds that we just, uh, awarded to the bid. Questions, comments on this resolution?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC dash 2022 dash 14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. The vote of three to zero, resolution 2022 dash 14 is adopted. Okay. Now, we're going to go back to item seven. Uh, Councilor Clark has rejoined the meeting at this time, and we'll go to seven A, which is a public hearing for the purpose of giving members of the public an opportunity to be heard for and against the proposed 2022 amended Stillwater Reinvestment Plan, a Stillwater Downtown Campus Link Project Plan, prior to any vote by the council. Melissa Reams.
Good evening again. Um, the Local Development Act provides for two public hearings regarding the proposed 2022 amended Stillwater Reinvestment Plan. Notice of these public hearings was published in the news press on April 16th, April 23rd and April 30th, 2022, indicating the time and place of the public hearings and also providing, uh, website information to, uh, for the public to be able to access the amended project plan. The first public hearing was held two weeks ago, May 2nd, 2022, and its intent was really to provide, provide a forum for the public, obviously, but also to allow a time for question and answers. Um, tonight's public hearing is really intended for interested parties to have an opportunity to be heard before you, as the council, take a vote on the amended project plan. And we have with us this evening our special counsel from the Center for Economic Development Law, Dan Bachelor and Lisa Harden, and Dan would like to, to just give you a few comments of the nature of the amended plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the council. I'm Dan Bachelor, appearing along with my co-counsel, Lisa Harden. We're with the Center for Economic Development Law, and we've been engaged to act as advisors to the City of Stillwater and the Stillwater Economic Development Authority. The, uh, project plan amendment that appears before you, that's before you for consideration this evening, uh, if adopted, will extend this city's reinvestment strategy to an additional 40-acre tract, forming a new increment district. If approved, then it will make possible for, it will make it possible for the Economic Development Authority with the approval of the city council to enter into a redevelopment agreement with a non-retail business. That new business is projected to invest approximately $140 million in their new facility in this community to create a new, uh, set of employment opportunities with a payroll that in time will exceed $6 million a year. The effect of that addition to the economic health of the community will not decrease the taxes of any taxing jurisdiction. Quite to the contrary, the investment and the employment and the attendant economic impacts will actually increase tax revenues for all jurisdictions in the area. So thus, the economic impact from this combined investment and new payroll is estimated to exceed a total of $450 million in positive economic impact to this community. So we strongly recommend your adoption of this amendment to the project plan, and in addition, we recommend a minor amendment that clarifies certain financing terms so that the financing authorizations will conform to the, uh, proposed redevelopment agreement that will be presented to you for consideration on June the 6th. That, uh, minor amendment does not change the budgetary totals or increase the budgetary authorization, but simply conforms the internal authorizations to what is necessary to enable the financial assistance to be provided for this new business under the terms of the prospective development agreement. So we enthusiastically recommend your approval of the amended amendment to the project plan and the minor clarification there, too. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Bachelor. Councilors, any questions? All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing on this item. I have one speaker signed up to speak, Mr. Roger Goes.
Roger Goes, uh, 1120 East Cornell. Thank you for allowing me this time. And thank you to Mayor Joyce, Councilor Jalosky, and, um, oh, that gal over there. I'm sorry. Melissa Reams, sorry. Golly.
I do that all the time.
I've, I've had some really good discussions about this. I, it, I support it. I think we, this is what we need to do. Um, I've, I've talked about several amendments. One of them did get made. There was a reference to a document that really didn't exist. And, uh, but from a user standpoint, somebody that uses the comprehensive plan and these core plans, this would be the last place I'd go to find out something about Total Energy Site. Now, the exhibits have been changed so that they are now showing that as an inclusion in the redevelopment area. That, I mean, the, um, downtown to campus link usually doesn't take anybody out to North of Boomer Lake. That's, that was my issue. I understand why it's being done. I just hope in the future, we can be a little more on target than that wide shot. But this is a, a great way to get it done quickly, and I think that's why it is being done. So I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate it. I have no one else signed up for a public hearing tonight, so I will close the public hearing on this item. Uh, and we will actually move at this time to item 10 on the agenda, which is ordinances related, uh, to this amended project plan. Item 10B is ordinance 3494 on second read, which is the, the amended project plan, uh, that Mr. Bachelor spoke of. There were, uh, as Mr. Goes noted, there were a few changes since first read that show, that, uh, expand the maps, uh, show a little more clarity there and, and clarify some of the language within the plan itself. We have, the minor amendment is listed as a separate amendment here. We don't actually need to do it that way. We can, we can fold those amendments into the ordinance 3494 amended changes. So, um, I'm going to read, second read, ordinance 3494, uh, and then I will, I guess, do we need a, um, a motion or to, to amend it to include the, the changes from 10 and 11?
So you're on second read, item B.
Yeah.
You should read it by title, and then you'll make your motion.
Okay.
To include the other changes.
All right. All right. So on second reading, we have ordinance number 3494. This is an ordinance amending ordinance 3407 to approve the 2022 amended Stillwater Reinvestment Plan, a Stillwater Downtown Campus Link Project Plan pursuant to the Oklahoma Local Development Act, designating and adopting a proposed increment district and additional project area, deferring the naming and establishing the date for creation of the increment district, adopting certain findings, authorizing the City of Stillwater to carry out and administer the project plan, establishing a tax apportionment fund, declaring apportionment funds to be special funds of the City of Stillwater or the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, authorizing the use of increment revenues for financing or payment of certain project costs, authorizing the Stillwater Economic Development Authority to carry out certain provisions of the project plan, ratifying and confirming the actions, recommendations and findings of the review committee and the Stillwater Planning Commission, directing continuing apportionment, providing for severability and declaring an emergency. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, this ordinance additionally by, by the addition of the changes to the project plan under 3495 on pages 10, 11 and 12, excuse me, 10 and 11, uh, of that plan, which is, uh, what Mr. Bachelor referred to as a rearranging of the internal financing, uh, categories, uh, leaving the budget, total budget the same. So I move that we add that to this, uh, ordinance 3494.
Second.
With a motion and a second on that, excuse me, we have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 3494 to that degree. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, that motion is, uh, approved. Now at this time, um, we can take discussion or motion on, uh, the adoption of ordinance 3494 as amended.
I move to adopt ordinance 3494 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. With a vote of four to zero, ordinance 3494 is adopted. This time, we would need an additional motion on declaring an emergency for this ordinance.
Motion, okay. Motion to declare an emergency on ordinance number 3494 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to declare this emergency. Please vote. Emergency is adopted by a vote of four to zero. So we can strike item 5A, uh, from the agenda. I don't know if we need a motion or anything to that effect. All right. Well, um, for those of you who may not know how much work goes on behind the scenes to get something like that done, it's been quite a, quite a week, uh, getting those ordinances ready to go. I appreciate the city staff and, um, Mr. Bachelor's firm, uh, for their assistance there. Okay. That takes us back. We can get back on track now here on the agenda. So we'll go back to item seven, public hearings. Item 7B is a hearing to determine whether the structure is located at 2420 East 12th Avenue, Stillwater, Oklahoma, is dilapidated as defined in 11 OS 22 dash 112C and abandoned as defined in 11 OS 22 dash 112.4E. This was continued from April 18th, 2022. Also make a note that Councilor Jalosky, uh, has left the meeting.
Mayor, I have a second update on item 7B. Um, attorney Beth Ann Childs has made contact with the property owner, and if you'll recall, um, the last time we met, when we continued this, um, from April 18th, uh, the property owner had, um, said that she had engaged representation to list the property for sale. It has been listed for sale, and as such, my recommendation would be to table this item until August 22nd, um, to give the property owner an opportunity to sell.
Uh, thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation to table this item to August 22nd, 2022. Please vote. It's approved with a vote of three to zero. Item 7C is public hearing to receive public comment regarding request to rezone properties addressed as 5823, 5911, 6001 and 6099 North Perkins Road from general industrial to residential single-family small lot. It's a CC dash 22 dash 86. Do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
Brady?
That's right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to, uh, take this moment real quick to introduce to you our new city planner. Uh, this is Jaclyn Porter. Uh, she comes to us from Leavenworth, Kansas, and, uh, she is a graduate of a university that's about 70 miles south of here, but it, it's only because their master's program is in, uh, city planning. So, um, we're grateful to have her here and, uh, and so, yeah, I wanted to introduce you to her.
Thank you. Welcome, Jaclyn.
Hi, guys. Good evening. Well, as you stated, my name is Jaclyn Porter. I'm the city planner. Um, tonight, I'm presenting to you a map amendment 2202. At the property, they're rezoning from general industrial to small lot residential at the location of 6099, 6001, 5911 and 5823 North Perkins Road. The subject property is located on the southeast corner of Burris and Perkins. To the west of the subject property across Perkins is, uh, Canyon's Neighborhood, and then to the south, just a ways, is the Tower Park subdivision. Here's a street view, um, looking to the east, southeast of the property off of Perkins. Uh, the subject property is currently undeveloped, as you The subject property is currently undeveloped, as you can see. The zoning map, the subject property is currently zoned, general industrial. To the south and to the east of the property is zoned also industrial, but it is also undeveloped. The further to the south and to the west is zoned RSS. And then the future land use map, we refer to this for forecasting what where our development's going to go in the future, all that good stuff. Here we go. All right, zoomed in, it's was proposed to have a commercial strip around along Perkins, high density on the two-thirds to the east of the property. Do you have any questions for staff?
Counselors, any questions? I would just ask, Jaclyn, if you go back to the zoning, current zoning map.
Yes.
So the crosshatch section is what they're requesting on rezoning. Does it extend to the Perkins Road line, or is there like a strip? It looks like there's a strip of industrial that would remain. Is that just a mapping issue?
I think it was just a mapping issue, how it overlays, because if the road has a right-of-way, and it's just just how it is.
So there wouldn't be a strip of weird zoning in front of this? Okay, thank you. All right, I appreciate that from staff. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up to speak on this item, and so I will now close the public hearing. And Jaclyn, let us know what the planning commission recommended.
Commission approved it four to zero.
Thanks so much. Counselors, questions, comments, motions?
Motion to approve planning commission, commission's vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the planning commission's recommendation to rezone this property. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that rezoning is approved. Okay, that takes us to item eight, general orders. 8A is approve an award of contract to Lake McMurtry Nature Trail Project, excuse me, approve award of a contract for Lake McMurtry Nature Nature Trail Learning Project to Jolino CCC in the amount of $284,708. Approve associated budget amendments and authorize the city manager to sign a grant amendment agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Tourism and Recreation. Mr. McLennan.
Good evening. John McLennan, Special Projects. In 2020, Lake McMurtry Friends received a grant for the for a recreation trail grant for a nature learning trail. It's a $300,000 project. It's 80% grant funding and 20% match. The city council authorized the matching funds of $60,000 at that time. Project was designed and bids were solicited, and all the bids that we received exceeded the budget, and they were rejected in November of 2021. Staff in Lake McMurtry Friends and the consultant worked together to modify the design and decrease the costs. We opened bids for the redesigned project on March 16 of this year. All five base bids again exceeded the available budget. Lake McMurtry Friends received an approval for an increase from the Oklahoma Department of Tourism and Recreation, and Lake McMurtry Friends has agreed to cover the increased match that goes with that increased grant funding. The project budget will be revised to $337,351. We've previously spent $47,947 on a design contract, so there's $289,404 remaining in the revised budget. Jolino CCC was the low bidder with a base bid of $284,708. Do have a recommendation. Pause if there's any questions. Jill Van Edgemond with Lake McMurtry Friends is also here tonight to help answer questions if necessary.
Thank you, John. Counselors, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to tell Jill, thank you. It's got to be a frustrating process to have a vision and have to keep coming back and trying to make it fit budget. We do that in our personal life, but I know it's got to be really, really tough with Lake McMurtry, but thank you for being diligent. Lake McMurtry is a true gem, and I think people have realized that over the last couple years, so congratulations and thank you.
What's your recommendation, John?
Hey, we recommend a motion to award the bid for construction of the Lake McMurtry Nature Learning Trail to Jolino CCC in the amount of $284,708. Approve the attached budget amendments and authorize the city manager to sign a grant amendment agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Tourism and Recreation.
Thanks, sir. Counselors?
Move to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept that recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that is approved. Thank you, John. Thank you, Jill. Item 8B is approve the purchase of property located at 2212 West 6th Avenue in an amount not to exceed $201,000, including closing costs. Approve the budget amendment appropriating the funds from the sales tax transportation fund and authorize the city manager to sign related documents. Mr. Garnes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This will be the fifth property we've purchased to accommodate the right turn lane for the proposed widening of 6th Avenue, and this again is at 6th and Western. We've previously discussed this in a study session in February of 2019. Our agreement with ODOT is they're responsible for the construction and design costs. City of Stillwater is responsible for purchasing right-of-way and utility relocation costs. Design engineers submitted their 60% design drawings, which indicates the need for the right-of-way for a right turn lane, that intersection. And the last of the needed properties for the additional right turn lane was recently put up for sale. Again, we're talking about this area right in here. You've previously approved the purchase of this property, this property, this property, and this property, the last two tonight. We're talking about this property and this at this time. As we've stated previously, the right turn lane will require right-of-way easements that utilize the entirety of the front yards, increases the slope on the property, steep driveways. We don't want cars backing into 6th Avenue. Basically, it makes the property unusable. The purchase price is $200,000. The realtor indicated they had planned to put it on the market for $215,000, but they would sell it to the city for $200, were estimating $1,000 in closing costs. There is a long-term lease with a tenant. That lease expires in December of '24. We believe that ODOT at this time, we believe ODOT's construction schedule will allow us to honor that lease, those lease terms. We will continue to rent it to the tenants. They want to leave early, I'm certain we wouldn't object, but if they want to stay there full-time, we'll collect the rents, put those rents back into the 260 fund. I know we have similar arrangements with at least one other property. We'll do the same thing. We're looking at internally whether we want to manage those or hire a rental agency to help us. Right now, we think we can do that in-house, but if we need to change that, we will. What happens to the structures in the future? Once they're vacant, if we can sell them for salvage and have them removed from the location, we'll do so. Otherwise, they'll have to be demolished. Any questions? And I have a recommended motion after your questions.
Thank you, Mone. Counselors, any questions?
You just said this is the final property we need for this, right? This is the final property we need for the widening of that intersection.
Four, well, it's the final properties we need to acquire, the structures. There will be additional right-of-way needed from the other two properties. And as we go further east, but FHWA has some very strict procedures you have to follow. We were able to do these because the property came on the market, and so we could anticipate that. But from this point on, we'll wait till we go further down the road. We'll recommend hiring a firm like we did on Perkins Road that specializes in this and make sure all the i's and t's are dotted.
Okay, thank you. What's your recommendation, Mone?
Recommendation is a motion to approve the purchase of property located at maybe 2212, I'm sorry, West 6th Avenue in an amount not to exceed $200,000 plus $1,000 closing costs. Approve the budget amendment appropriating the funds from the sales tax transportation fund and authorize the city manager to sign related documents.
Counselors?
And it is 2216. Thank you.
Motion to approve staff recommendation for the purchase of property located at 2212 West 6th Avenue.
Wait a minute, I have a question.
Excuse me. Should be 2216, I'm sorry.
2216.
Okay, well, everything in our packet says 2212.
Yeah, it does.
Yes, it is. Including, I believe, the contract.
I am a bit embarrassed here. I guess I have it another place.
The contract says 2212 also.
Yep, it is 2212.
Okay.
It's 2212.
Then I second that motion.
Gave me a heart attack. Do I need to say it again?
No.
Okay.
I think we have a motion to approve the purchase of this property at 2212 West 6th Avenue.
And I seconded it.
And there's a second, and so now we'll vote. With a vote of three to zero, that purchase is approved. Okay, that takes us to item 9C, resolution CC-22, excuse me, dash 2022 dash 16, a resolution of the Stillwater City Council adopting an operating budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Kristy Kluck.
Good evening. Kristy Kluck, Finance Director. And the budgets that are attached to the resolution are unchanged from the budgets that were presented during the public hearing on May 2. So it is staff's recommendation to to adopt that resolution. But I am happy to answer questions if anything's come up in the meantime.
Thank you, Ms. Kluck. Counselors, any questions or motion on the resolution?
I move to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the budget is adopted. Again, that is always so anticlimactic when we get to this point, because you guys have put in months of work to get us to that. We really do appreciate that work, and we'll talk some more about other budgets here in another meeting. Item 9D can be skipped. We took care of that issue already. We've already handled 10, so we're to item 11, reports from officers and boards. Ms. Carley.
Yes, a request for executive session pursuant to 25 OS Section 307B2 to discuss labor negotiations with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 102, and also a request for an executive session pursuant to this, under the same authority, to discuss labor negotiations with IAFF Local 2095.
Thank you. Mr. McNichol.
Thank you. We will once again have the Stillwater City Hall HR team holding open interviews this Saturday, May 21, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM in room 121 at the community center. Individuals have an opportunity to interview for library shelver, maintenance worker, and library administrative clerk positions. No appointments necessary. Don't miss out on this unique hiring opportunity. If you're looking for a job, city's hiring in those areas, and you can get a complete explanation of those positions and the benefits that go with them.
Excellent. I will just make a personal note that I was, in fact, a library administrative clerk at the Stillwater Public Library in 20, no, 1999, and it was a great job, so you should show up and apply for it. And those are the ones that you listed as well.
Good.
Vice Mayor.
All right. Stillwater's first-ever Enchantment Under the Sea Dance will be Friday, June 17, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM in the Stillwater Public Library parking lot. Tickets are $25 per couple, $10 for each additional child, and covers admission to the outdoor family dance, live entertainment, crafts, a bounce house, a snow cone truck, and other snacks. Visit tickets.stillwater.org to learn how you can purchase your tickets today. So Stillwater First Enchantment Under the Sea Dance, parking lot of the Stillwater Public Library, June 17, 7:00 to 9:00 PM.
Super exciting.
Yes.
We, my daughter and I have missed the daddy-daughter dance the last couple of years, so I really appreciate the city staff for putting this together and getting everybody out to that event, because this will be daddy-daughter, and this is for everybody.
This is for everybody. Well, and it is my birthday, so I appreciate the library giving me a party on my birthday. So I'll be there.
Make sure we get a banner.
That's right.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Well, speaking of exciting, come fish with local police officers and the Oklahoma Department of Wildlife Conservation at the annual COPS and Bobbers event this Saturday, May 21. The youth fishing event will take place from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on the west side of Boomer Lake. There will be food, fun, and fishing. You don't want to miss it.
You don't. COPS and Bobbers is a lot of fun. I'm looking forward to that.
I just want to point out, you can drop your child off to fish while you go apply for jobs at the community center. Same time, built-in babysitter.
Good to know. I will let you know that the Stillwater City Council will not have another meeting until June 6, so here are a few dates to remember before then. City offices will be closed Monday, May 30 for Memorial Day. Trash and recycling is collected as usual. City Hall's new hours of operations start on June 2. The building will be open Monday through Thursday, 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from 7:30 AM to 11:30 AM. That's our pilot program for the summer to give folks more time in the morning or later time after work to get in Monday through Thursday, and then a shorter day on Friday as well. So please take note of those hours. I hope we see folks take advantage of those. Also, please note that many city services can be completed online outside of regular business hours. Visit stillwater.org/onlineservices to learn how you can pay utility bills and tickets from home. Okay. Item 13. Hold on a second, I got to get my agenda up. Item 13 is appointments to the Audit Committee. I got to get there in my packet. See, I'm using this electronic packet.
I'm so proud of you, Mayor.
Taken me forever.
You were our last holdout.
This is why. Where am I?
Are you using the bookmarks?
No.
Well, that would help.
I know. I know. Oh, there we go. Hey, look at this, a piece of paper.
So close.
All right. There are two open seats on the Audit Board. I'm all confused now, looking at paper. Mr. Austin Pollard is, his term is expiring, but he is asked to be reappointed, so I will nominate or nominate Mr. Pollard to be reappointed to the Audit Committee. I'll also nominate Rachel Dominic CPA to be appointed to the vacant position on the Audit Committee.
Second.
All right, we have a second on those two nominations. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, those nominations are approved. Thank you so much to Austin Pollard and Rachel Dominic for their willingness to serve on our Audit Committee. It's a very important function here at the City of Stillwater. All right. Before item 14, I will now recess the Stillwater City Council meeting, and we will move to the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. I'll call it order, the SUA meeting for May 16, 2022. On the consent docket, we just have meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. The consent docket is approved by a vote of three to zero. Under general orders, we have item A, authorize the General Manager to Contract Amendment Number One with Frees and Nichols for preliminary and final design bidding and construction services for the new cathodic production system for the COPI pipeline. Mr. Barth, I'll let you continue.
Good evening, trustees. David Barth with City Engineering. Tonight, here to revisit the cathodic protection system project. If you remember back in August of 2021, you all authorized us to hire Frees and Nichols to study the cathodic protection system on the COPI pipeline, as well as some other facilities that we have, some elevated storage tanks, ground storage tanks, and some wastewater lift stations. So Frees and Nichols has completed their evaluation. Much of our system needs to be replaced, which we kind of knew already, but we didn't know to what degree. So on this slide, you can see we've got just a picture I've shown before, what the leak of the COPI pipeline on the left side that's due to corrosion. On the right, you can see there's an example of a cathodic protection system using an impressed current system, which is what we what we have and what we will be installing. The project location, as I mentioned, the COPI pipeline, which extends from COPI Lake down to the water treatment plant carrying raw water, and then from the water treatment plant south to where it kind of intersects with the OSU Water Treatment Plant, that that part of the COPI pipeline is carrying treated water. And so that entire line needs to be cathodically protected, and if you see those little red dots there on the on the alignment, those are cathodic protection test stations. So we have one about every mile. We should have more than that. We should have about five times the number that we have, so that's part of this project. We'll be adding more cathodic protection test stations. Additionally, we'll be adding more rectifiers. Um, additionally, we'll be adding more rectifiers, um, which I'll show you a picture of in just a second. Uh, right now, we have a single rectifier at COE Lake and another rectifier uh, at the water treatment plant. We should have one about every eight miles. So this is an example, uh, again, this is a picture I showed last fall, but the the COE pump station rectifier there on the left, um, is at the end of its useful life. Um, the central tower rectifier, which was installed in twenty-eighteen, um, it's much newer, uh, and this is the the newer technology. So that's what we'll be um, looking to install with this project. Uh, this next slide just shows the strategic plan alignment, um, and our budget and funding. So with, tonight, I'm asking for uh, trustees to authorize an additional hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, which will come from the Water Capital and Wastewater Capital Funds uh, to fund preliminary and final design bidding and construction services from Freesian Nichols. And before I ask you if you have any questions, I I would also like to add that um, we're putting together a package to clear the right-of-way over the pipeline. It's, to my knowledge, it's never been done. Uh, across the forty-four miles, we have about four miles that is um, dense forest. And so we'll need to have all of that cleared to work on our pipeline anyway. And so we'll be um, looking to put to put together a bid package to advertise for those services. But any questions about cathodic protection before I recommend a motion?
Trustees, any questions?
I have many questions, but I'm not going to waste the time on it. Um, you know, having grown up in the boating business, I deal with, dealt with galvanic corrosion a lot, and I understand where we're headed with this, so.
What's your recommendation for us?
Sure. Uh, staff recommends a motion to uh, one, authorize the General Manager to execute Contract Amendment Number One with Freesian Nichols for design bidding and construction phase services for the cathodic protection systems in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, to authorize total expenditures not to exceed thir- three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, three-hundred dollars, which includes the original study phase, Amendment One services, and a ten percent contingency, and finally, approve the related budget amendments.
Thank you, David. Trustees?
Move approval of staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation, please vote. Approved uh, by a vote of three to zero. Thank you, David. Item six A is Resolution SUA twenty-two-two-six, a resolution of the Stillwater Utilities Authority adopting an operating budget for fiscal year twenty-two-two, twenty-two-three. Ms. Kristi Kluck.
Yes, and again, the um, attachment to the resolution is unchanged from the public hearing um, version that you saw. And so it is staff's recommendation to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Kristi. Trustees?
Move approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, please vote. Resolution is adopted, three to zero. Nothing further on the SUA agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn SUA, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. This time, I will call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority uh, meeting for May sixteenth, twenty-two-two. First up is the Consent Docket, is there a motion?
Move approve stat, the Consent Docket.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve consent, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. Item five A, consider recommendation from TIF Number Three Implementation Committee regarding a small business enhancement funding request from Callie Crispin, DBA Social One Seventy-four Stilly, and authorize staff and special counsel to enter a small business enhancement agreement with Social One Seventy-four Stilly. Melissa Reams.
Good evening, trustees. This is a, one of the best parts of my job to get to bring to you these economic development projects, and for you to meet some really great uh, entrepreneurs that are, that the call Stillwater home. So we're going to start off this evening with um, Social Still, uh, Social One Seventy-four Stilly. And I wanted to pull up uh, her visioning board, if I can find it here quickly. And if I can't, you, it was in your packet. Um, here we go. Kevin, thank you, Kevin. Um. This is where I wanted to start. Uh, the the applicant is Callie Crispin, and this is a sole proprietorship. So she's doing business as Social One Seventy-four Stilly. Um, Callie is with us this evening. I'll let her get up in front of you and and give you a few uh, insights into her business and how the journey that she's made to get here. Um, your implementation committee met on May the second and reviewed her application. She is asking uh, the TIF to participate with her in a small business enhancement. She's leased the space down in the American Legion Building where Precision Flooring used to be, and that address is six oh seven South Main Street. And she is asking us to partner with her as she updates the facade down there. So I'm going to ask Callie to come up and just give you a flavor for what her business is and how she intends to use the space, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions before I give you the recommendation from the committee.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good.
So I'm Callie, um, as you guys can see, Social One Seventy-four is the name of the business. And just to kind of give you a roundabout idea of what that means, um, people ask all the time. So it actually kind of started in a car trip with my girlfriends from Monong, Wisconsin, to, well, to Monong, Wisconsin, from Minneapolis, Minnesota. And it was during COVID. Of course, you guys know, that was a weird time for all of us. Um, and I just knew that I wanted to do something with food, and I wanted to do something with people, and I wanted to have some type of something to get me out of my house, because as an extrovert, it was not going well. Uh, so I'm a social butterfly, so that's where the social part came from. And One Seventy-four, as you can imagine, is exit one seventy-four, how you get to Stillwater. So that was kind of the vision behind what the name of the company is. Um, what we do is we do different types of charcuterie boxes, spreads, cups, all kinds of things to help people celebrate like, life's important moments, and try to keep them from having to put all the work on themselves and try to take it all on us. So this space will serve as a commercial kitchen in the back, and then I'll have an event space in the front, as well as an an office space for my other business as well.
Excellent. I had um, some charcuterie, a charcuterie box of yours at an event last week, or two weeks ago maybe, and it was fantastic.
Well, good, thank you.
I'm excited this space will be, um, this is a great spot, close to Maine, close to Sixth and Main for um, an enhancement, and and that facade will will get lots of views uh, from from that corner.
Looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
I'm really proud of you. I've watched your business grow from from the very beginning, and Shannon Williams and I couldn't be more pleased that this will be the second business from Mary Main Street that started online and will now help you bricks and mortar. And so we are excited for that um, excitement, and just congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
So as I said, the committee met on May second and reviewed the project application. Um, and their recommendation to you as the trustees is to uh, approve uh, the investment in this project at an amount not to exceed half of the project costs, up to nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents. And staff will enter into uh, an agreement with Callie and um, get that work done. So that'll go right along with our our marafield, our clean, white with purple. It'll be really, really pretty.
Excellent. So do you have a recommendation for us?
So the motion is to uh, approve the recommendation from the Implementation Committee to um, fund half of the project costs at an amount not to exceed nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents.
Thank you, Melissa.
Mm-hmm.
Trustees?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve uh, this small business enhancement funding request, please vote. Three enthusiastic yeses. It's approved. Looking forward to seeing it. Item five B is consider recommendation from the TIF Number Three Implementation Committee regarding the proposed redevelopment agreement with Gaia Holdings LLC, and authorize the General Manager and Special Counsel to negotiate, finalize, and execute terms of redevelopment agreement for the project consistent with a term sheet.
Okay, the second project this evening is with Gaia Holdings LLC. They have purchased the property at ten seventeen South Main Street. So think where the Salvation Army is, their resale shop, you're going just to the south. And there's, I think there's two houses on the property in there. Um, yeah, and um, so that's the direction they're going. And as we all know, that end of Main Street needs a little love. Um, the principals are Alberto Gallarda, and his wife is Stephanie, and they are here with us this evening. Um, they're going to come up and give you a flavor for their project. Uh, and then I will have the recommendation from the committee um, on this particular project. So Alberto and Stephanie, and I've got your PowerPoint from the other day pulled up, so if you want to just click through that, or do you, okay.
Good evening, Major Joyce and Trustees. Uh, we'll probably go through this real quick, because I know we have a lot of content from our last, the last opportunity we have to present. My name is Alberto Gallardo, I'm a Stillwater resident, uh, actually graduated from from OSU with an engineering degree, and uh, I work um, as a supply chain leader for an for an energy company, and also a managing member of Gaia Holdings. So um, the, I I want to tell you kind of what the concept is, I know you already have this in the package. Uh, but our intent is to create, and the address that Melissa already mentioned is a state-of-the-art climbing facility, uh, with um, kids' interactive area, fitness equipment, retail space, juice bar, and multiple sitting areas for students and professionals to not just work, but study as well. Uh, but a- actually, the the mission and the vision for the City of Stillwater really resonates with us, because uh, we started working on this project, because we are very involved in the community. I actually act as a youth mentoring uh, chair for a nonprofit here in Stillwater called Resilient Payne County. Uh, we, uh, me and my wife actually are pretty active rock climbers. We climb all over from uh, Norway, Germany, uh, Canada, all around the US. And more than just the the physical and mental uh, challenge that you can get when you're rock climbing, when we look at the research data, uh, we see all the benefits that that uh, rock climbing and activities like this can do for youth. So we're very excited about bringing a a facility where we can create a healthy and a safe environment for families, for youth, OSU students as well, but really any members of the community, and even Payne County. Uh, we think that people can reach their fullest potential through climbing, nutrition, and human connection. Um, I will probably, let me see. Go to that, that won't go through the bio, but uh, here's kind of the core uh, core elements of our business, right? Of course, trying to link uh, downtown OSU campus. Uh, finding a facility actually was quite challenging, you know, we we look at the, around the state of Oklahoma, and then you have uh, multimillion-dollar facilities in Oklahoma City, Tulsa. Uh, you have one in in Norman as well, uh, another one in downtown Oklahoma City. And the most recent facility actually started in downtown Edmond, uh, off of Broadway. So uh, the challenges is the space, right? So we needed a space of about five, six thousand square feet. We started trying, we worked with Melissa actually quite a bit, and and a few few builders here in town, tried to find uh, the perfect space. That uh, quickly proved to be a a big challenge. We actually spent about seven, eight months trying to secure uh, whether it was a lease or to buy a property. Uh, and really what we decided, with the amount of assets that we're going to put in in this location, it really just makes economic sense to actually invest into the property. And also, we can also tailor the facility and and do something that, in our opinion, we didn't just want to have a facility or a climbing gym, but we wanted to do something to make the people of Stillwater proud, and that they will be excited, and also we know, uh, as Melissa mentioned, it might be a challenging area, but hopefully with with the business that we're planning to bring, that will also encourage uh, other businesses to come here. Now, um, uh, again, climbing gym, I think that's the the big uh, big concept. Uh, nutrition is is extremely important, that's something that we introduce. When we do the youth events, we like to talk about that. It's not just about sport, uh, or or different activities. You also have to look at the nutritional uh, element of things. Uh, fitness arts and nutrition, we plan to promote and create an avenue for local artists to promote their art and hopefully sell it at no commission. Uh, nonprofit events, I'll touch on that one here in a little bit, because that's really, it's at the heart of everything that we do. And uh, let me just jump into this one. So this is, this is a quick, quick article, and you can see some of the events that we've done in the past. We started doing this back in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, again, it it, our main goal has always been to provide this type of events for the different agencies across Payne County. I like to think that we act as a bridge, right, where we have the different agencies, and where our skills and our background, and we bring kind of like the logistics, and we interact with the local businesses and and figure out a way to provide these services at zero cost. We never want for an event uh, that to have like a five-dollar cost, and if a parent has four kids, for those twenty dollars to be the the deciding factor, whether they can go or not. Uh, so that's, uh, our main goal will continue to be to support these events and actually to actually scale that now that we have more access to the scheduling, as well as um, uh, figure out kind of the policies and procedures for a lot of these facilities, as well as the liability guidelines for any fitness facility, uh, are are very specific to every single location. So by by us managing this one actively, we can, we can tailor that to adapt to the support of the community. So um, this is a, this is just a little quick snapshot for those of you that were probably wondering, well, why climbing? Hopefully, you've done this uh, in the past. I know Norman, he's he's a phenomenal hiker. He's done quite a bit of hikes, but if you haven't had a chance to to experience uh, rock climbing, I just want to leave you with with a few things of what, why, why climbing and resilience is important, right? It creates trust and cooperation, improves self-esteem and confidence. Uh, it creates a positive community, right? It all starts with the community. Stimulates flow, creativity, environmental stewardship, and also encourages uh, you to see life from a different perspective. In all these years that we work with youth, we actually work with youth, not just in Payne County, we also work uh, with youth in Oklahoma City, uh, Memphis, Tennessee, and also um, outside, in some parts of Latin America as well. And I mean, I never seen a single time when when a kid reaches the top of of the of the climb, and they have the biggest smile on their face, and it's quite a rewarding thing. And and also, you know, it just, it just helps them realize, you know, i- if you, if you try every, it doesn't matter what your body type is, because the the beauty of rock climbing, there's no really distinction between uh, sex or religion or any any other beliefs, right? Age, e- everybody can try to solve, we actually call them climbing problems, right? Because it's just like solving a problem. So everybody can try to do that, and and it's actually quite exciting to see people in in the community that grows around that, where everybody encourage each other to do that. Also, one thing that I forgot to mention, that back in the time, it used to be a a sport that you practiced in the Yosemite Valley, right? It was quite famous. Now it's actually an official Olympic sport, so that's something that is is pretty exciting for us. So kids now are also looking at at this as as an avenue for them to to go into the Olympics. Now, um, on top of that, we also believe that it's not just the work that we do with the local agencies, but but the work that we do with the local businesses that can make things like this happen, and we'll be, we'll be a a very active member uh, as um, Gaia Holdings when it comes to contributing to this type of event. So as you can see in the bottom, there's some some local uh, businesses, as well as some businesses from Colorado, just because that's the network that we have, and some other groups doing some phenomenal things across across the nation and actually worldwide. Uh, so we'll be acting uh, as another member uh, of the local businesses that support this type of event. And I won't go through any, uh, on the, I'll show you a little bit of the market. Uh, I would prefer this uh, for for the TIF committee, right, for the presentation. So I knew I had a little bit of time, but I just want to show you kind of like what the industry growth is, right? Yes, we're passionate about climbing, yes, we think this can help you, but what is been happening with rock climbing uh, in the past, you know, even just in the past twenty years, you can almost see two thou, in nineteen ninety, we have eleven facilities, these are just net US climbing gyms, so that includes facilities that are open and closed. So in two thousand, we have a hundred-and-fifty-four, two thousand and ten, two hundred and sixty-five. Two thousand and twenty-one, we reached uh, five hundred and ninety-one, so it's almost been doubling every every ten years. Uh, and if you want to know kind of like the statistics of the facilities uh, around Oklahoma, as I mentioned before, we have Trash Trash Hole Climbing, which is a multimillion-dollar facility um, in the northwest part of Oklahoma City. Uh, Summit Climbing, that was actually acquired by uh, Dallas Firm that came into Oklahoma and purchased that facility. They also perch, purchased the one that is in Norman, that is, that's why it's called, also that's part of the Summit Climbing uh, group. Tulsa opened uh, about uh, four years ago, another multimillion-dollar investment. Uh, it's called Climb Climb Tulsa, you can see off the highway, it's a gray and teal building, beautiful facility. Uh, Block Works, uh, again, Oklahoma-owned, recently opened uh, in downtown Edmond. Uh, actually, when we were kind of talking about uh, with with city planning about the facility and kind of like some of the things that we will need uh, in terms of um, developing this this facility, uh, one of the 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 new staff members that are a part of the development, uh, the city planning, excuse me, and they were actually behind that project, so it was exciting to see and and get some feedback from them as well. Um, again, the 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 last one, number five, of course, in orange, uh, been here in Stillwater, is Still, is Stillwater Climbing, which will be Oklahoma-owned. And uh, that's the, a little bit of snapshot of what the conceptual design of the building will be that you have here on the screen. Uh, we're really excited, again, as as we mentioned before. Uh, for the climbing facility, you can do, you know, it's all about the dimensions, right? The elevation that you have. The elevation that you have. But, you know, we wanted to go beyond that where you say, you're driving through that part of downtown. We want not, we want people to be really proud about what we're creating there. But we also want to encourage people from the surrounding areas in Payne County as well, even Oklahoma City and Tulsa. I know a lot of people that just to go to some of these facilities will travel quite a bit. So hopefully it will be something that will be a great addition to that part of downtown. And I will probably stop there. I think I have a summary there and a bunch of other ones. This is one, this is one of our main partners, right? From, this is a group from Memphis, it's called One Family Memphis. It's a, it's a phenomenal nonprofit and this is their facility where we've done a lot of technical training as well as operations, safety, and really they're helping us draft our policies and procedures. So how do we manage that now? This is a, it's a different scale, right? This is, this is a pretty big facility, right? We're talking about 30, 40,000 square feet here, there in the south part of Memphis. But the reason why we picked that one and more than we picked, they picked us because we were very fortunate that they wanted to work with us. They actually, at the core of everything that they do is they have a facility because they want to help the community, right? So they actually located their facility in a place where everybody said, you shouldn't go there. You should, you want to open like a multimillion dollar facility for rock climbing in the south part of Memphis, you shouldn't go there, why don't you go somewhere else? And they, they wanted to go against what everybody said and they're doing quite well. And they're actually very passionate about helping us. We're going, we're planning another trip to go see them and to continue to do some training. And they say, as soon as you open, we're the ones coming because we want to keep helping with this. They believe a lot on the benefits and some of the things that we can do with programs like this for youth. And again, and to have a facility open for the entire community, right? So this, our financing partners, right? We're very fortunate to be working with Arvest Bank here in Stillwater with Adam Brown and Patrick Ketcher. They've been extremely supportive and patient because we do have a lot of questions and we throw a lot of things at them. And I know opening climbing facilities is not like a very common business practice for them. So we have to all learn together. So it's been, it's been quite exciting and Adam has been able to provide phenomenal feedback as well as a lot of support from Patrick. With that being said, that's me and Stephanie when we're not wearing this type of clothes and we've been spending about five hours trying to climb a mountain. And obviously we have a big smile on our face. But if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Counselors or trustees, any questions?
I have a couple of things. First, on page five of your presentation, you say that it's not just about business, it's about improving our community. And I'm excited about that for a couple of reasons to reinforce what Melissa said a while ago. That particular block can definitely use some love. And I believe that this development will inspire additional projects in that part of downtown, on the south end of downtown. The other thing is, is that as a former school board member and as now a city counselor, I frequently hear we need more things for our youth to do here in town and here it is. And I'm really excited about that as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback. We're very excited.
I'm going to do what Councilor Clark said. And I might, I am petrified of heights, but I might try and climb it.
Oh, it'll take you two days, yes.
Well, it may take longer.
Excellent, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
Oh, I do have one more question, actually. What, obviously we don't have a site plan here. So what are the parking arrangements as part of this project?
So there's a couple of things, we, before we start, actually before we acquired this, this property, there's actually two different addresses, but in the county assessor, it's actually one, I think you call it document number. We actually have a meeting with city planning where we look at the guidelines for parking and the amount of parking spaces that we need. So right now what they estimated is with the amount of street parking that there's in their surrounding areas that we should be able to satisfy those needs. Now, we'd still talk to Melissa about the potential we also share with the, with the TIF committee members that we will be continuing the conversation in terms of as we continue to see growth in that area. I know Brady's group as well is looking at other parking opportunities with other developments that have been happening with Block 34, Stone Cloud and a couple of other restaurants and businesses going in the area. But for the time being, when we presented the project and we had about a one hour, an hour and a half meeting here with them and we showed them the facility, the capacity, the type of use. They went ahead and reviewed everything and all the guidelines and they came back and their recommendation is that we can actually satisfy the needs for our customers and all the visitors with the existing parking. But obviously, any additional development will greatly benefit what we're trying to do in that part of downtown.
Okay, and what is the capacity of this facility?
The capacity as of right now, of course, it will depend once we have the final drawings and obviously it goes by the fire code and everything. But we're thinking about, it's a 7,000 square feet facility and the capacity will be ranging between 80 to 100 people, right? So, but that's a preliminary assessment, so don't call me that because it can change, change a little bit. But as soon as we have that, if you would like to get that information, we'll be happy to provide that as well.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
So the TIF implementation committee joined in with your assessment of this project. They see that this is a wonderful project and would bring life to an underserved area of Main Street in our town. Unfortunately, we have gotten to the point now with TIF dollars that we have awarded all, every bit of the million dollars but 45,000 has been awarded. One of those awards is to the Everyman Project and we have yet to get into a redevelopment agreement with that project. Our hope is that we get some positive news this week. But the TIF, your TIF implementation committee is ready to take action and send you a recommendation on that particular project. That potentially could free up some money upfront for this project because Alberto and Stephanie's ask on this project was $593,000 upfront. And we, we don't have that money to provide to this project at this juncture. So the committee came back and their recommendation to you as trustees is to award to this project $462,740 in pay as you go or in arrears funding for the project. Unfortunately, Alberto, unless things have changed, tells me that the project will not be able to proceed at this point in time unless we participate with them at the very beginning of the project. So we're in kind of a quandary here. And I don't know that I have a good answer for you as to how to resolve it.
Will we know more after?
I'm hoping, I'm working with the other projects bank and we're hoping to hear something this week on that. SBA is involved and so that tends to complicate matters. And I think SBA is involved on y'all's, on their project as well. But they've been working with Arvest diligently to get the funding in place and the bank is, is very, very supportive.
Would you like to hear from, okay.
Sure.
So we did review after the TIF meeting and the recommendation from the committee came up. Of course, our initial discussion with Melissa at that point of time, because we started working on this last year, was to seek for an upfront support from the city of Stillwater, from the TIF committee. But after we heard the recommendation, we circled back and really got a chance to regroup with the Arvest team. The, when we look at the numbers and the type of support that we can get every year, we're still confident with the business model, so we can still continue to apply for SBA. But of course, the biggest thing that we tried to explain to the committee is we started looking at, I know we look at the, at the market, at the marketplace, right? Downtown, that we look at 1907, we look at different facilities that we tried to lease. So quickly, the scope of our project started to grow. But when we look at the business model, everything proved correct. And I mean, the guys at Arvest, they've been putting like a triple magnifying glass every single number, asking a bunch of questions. And the biggest thing for us was, well, we can, we can simplify. We can do a lot of things at a different scale. But do we really want to compromise on what we're trying to provide? Because technically, we have the land, as long as we get the permits approved, we can put a building, you know, and we can just, just make a simple building. But we wanted to do more than that, right? I think we really believe in what the TIF committee is trying to do and hands downtown. I used to live in Oklahoma City, so I saw what happened at the Paseo, at the Plaza District, Midtown. I mean, it's something phenomenal. You, in the past, you didn't go there. But the, if, if we were not, we're not able to get any upfront funding, we will still proceed and apply to SBA. Arvest Bank and ourselves truly believe that having any upfront support, even upfront or at complete, upon completion of construction will significantly improve our case when we come to the SBA. But by all means, even what the, what the committee recommended and suggested, it's a phenomenal support. So we think that that will still go be, be a good application for SBA. But of course, with the, with the scale and the scope that it grew from leasing a 5,000 square feet space to now buying, buying this, this location downtown and really building something from the ground up to that it will look like the one that, like the building that you have in your package. We're actually working with Lily Architects, if you're not familiar with them. They're the ones that, right across from Kane's Ballroom, they're, they're the ones designing Oklahoma Pop Museum and also Bob Dylan's Museum of Art. So I mean, we want a little bit above and beyond because at the end of the day, we're residents of Stillwater. So we want to see something beautiful there. So anything that we can get upfront or upon completion will significantly impact our probability of success and also the business case that we bring to the SBA. But we told Melissa, we're moving forward, right? To the degree that we close, close on the, on the property, you know? And we wanted to have that secured and that's actually already part of the business loan. So we didn't close on that separately. Arvest Bank is completely behind this project. So yeah, so I just wanted to add that, just that clarification, but thank you.
Thank you. Melissa, what's the ability for, I mean, I assume we could come back at a later time and amend the project plan to move money from being in arrears to making it
Absolutely.
available earlier, if that's possible?
Absolutely. We can, we can start down the path of entering into a redevelopment agreement on this project. And as, as things reveal themselves, we, we may be coming back to you and asking for an amendment to what the recommendation of the TIF committee was.
Okay, thanks. Can you just explain the 462,740? What, what is that number based on?
It's 22% of the total project costs, which include equipment, any kind of permitting fees, things along those lines and all the soft costs. So the architect, the engineer, all of that. Whereas, and this is a significant development. It ticks the boxes on all the objectives contained in the project plan. If it were a assistance in project development, its threshold starts at greater than 200,000, but its percentage of just construction costs, so hard construction costs, starts at 12%. This project, I mean, a recommendation from staff, which is Norman and I, it really checks so many boxes for us, it was a significant development. And that's how we got to the 462 that the committee honed in on.
Is there been a calculation of what the increment collection would be?
Mm-hmm. Kevin, I'm going to need you to pull this up, please. Let me escape, get out of this, oops. There has been, we've done a lot of work on this one in particular. There you go. And I'm sorry, I always hate when I pull Excel up on this page. It's so small. So let's start down here and I'm going to try and zoom up a little bit and get this bigger for you guys. So you can, come on. Oh no, here we go. Okay, no, that's too big.
I can actually read that.
Then it must be too big.
Okay. So on the spreadsheet, what we start with is you can see the capped basis on that property back in 2018 when the TIF became effective, it's pretty low, 57,000. Its property value now today is, on the assessor's rolls, is about 160,000. And Alberto and Stephanie bought the property for 200,000. Then we add in building construction costs, we get to a total land value. But with significant development, their base percentage award starts at 22%. And so I started analyzing what were hard construction costs. The purchase of the property, the overall construction gets you down to these hard construction costs. And then you start adding in the soft costs, the architectural and the engineering, the permitting fees and then the furniture fixtures and equipment. So that gets you down to a total investment of 2103,362. And that's how we got to, you can see it right here, the 462,740. And again, this is, this is, yeah, this is a technically upfront calculation. They honed in on that. If we come over here, so if we look at total project taxes, which is anything, it's all been netted out, 684,361. And then I calculated present value here. So it's pretty close then to that 22% over time.
I mean, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're, the increment is sufficient to cover the investment that we're making.
That's absolutely right. Now, we have received, we are receiving funding, funding from the collection off Abdo Lorm. And, and it's a catch 22 for me. Do we, do we keep that money and build up some reserve? Or do we see as this project so clearly demonstrates that it's worthy of our contribution? And, and so how do we blend that?
Well, I think at this point, it makes sense for us, you know, to move forward to say, you know, we're, we want you to move forward to the redevelopment agreement. Well, this would be my assessment of the situation with it in arrears as recommended by the committee. But also to ask staff to work out what, you know, to work with, with the developer and their team on, you know, how we may be able to
Okay.
reallocate some of that depending on funding available and, you know, potential other options and try to be creative about how we can make sure this actually is able to get up. And I mean, that, that building at that location would
Stellar.
be unbelievable. So I mean, it's a
It definitely checks every box, like you said.
It's worth us spending some time to work on being creative about it.
Now, Melissa, did you say a while ago that there's about $45,000 that's available now? Did I miss that? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
So part of the plan could be use the 45
Right.
and then do the rest of it in arrears, correct?
Right, we could do that. I don't know, that, that gets you very far down the road.
That's better than zero.
But it's better than zero. And then we'll keep working. Yeah, we definitely could do that.
I would assume we'll have some time, you know, there, there's still a lot of levers being pulled at this point and things happening. And so over, you know, the next several weeks,
Right, right.
we may be in a different situation or may have some other options that are presented.
We certainly may. And if that other option presents itself, it will be brought back to you for your
Yes.
approval, one way or the other.
So do we need action today for any reason? Or if we, if we postpone this to June 6th, would we be better prepared to vote on something?
I, I think what I would ask you this evening is to give permission to staff and, and our attorneys, our special counsel to start working on a redevelopment agreement with the developer. And, and that may take us some time. We have, the committee now has put time limits on some of these things.
I was just going to ask if we had some time limits.
So after your approval or after the TIF committee's recommendation, we have 60 days to get into a redevelopment. we have 60 days to get into a redevelopment agreement. It can be extended, and, and if we see that we're having problems, we will do that. And then, once that agreement is reached, the developer has six months to begin construction. And again, that is, there are extensions available. We just have to work through the committee.
Well, and it's a learning process as we develop.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So Counselor Clark, that would be our recommendation to you this evening, that you authorize staff and, well, where did I have it here? Staff and our special counsel to work on a redevelopment agreement with the developer in an amount not to exceed 462,740 dollars. And, and it would be paid in arrears or pay as you go.
And are we done at that point? Or does it come back to us for approval once the agreement's reached?
No, I mean, once you give us the authority to enter into that redevelopment agreement, you won't see it again unless you ask for it.
Okay.
We, we would see it again if you were going to change the
Correct.
Correct, because what you're authorizing us today is a, is a sum certain, which we may need to tweak that a little bit.
Consistent with the existing term sheet. But if we, if we're able to figure out how to move that around, then we would come back for a new.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, I, yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation to get this process started and to work creatively with the developer as we move forward.
Second.
We've motioned a second to approve the staff recommendation. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that's approved. Good luck with this project. We're really excited to hopefully make it work out.
So we're on the lay.
And you're going to have a charcuterie board afterwards.
Well, I'll ask you later. All right, that takes us to item 6A, Resolutions Number CDA 2022-3, A Resolution to the Storero Economic Development Authority Adopting an Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. I assume this is the same budget that was heard in the public hearing? So trustees, is there a motion on the resolution?
I move to accept the unspoken staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the budget resolution is adopted. That's the end of this agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Do adjourn.
Second.
Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, CDA is now adjourned. That takes us to our annual meeting of the Storero Public Works Authority. For May 16, 2022, I'll call this meeting to order. We can approve our minutes on the consent docket from last year. Is there a motion on consent?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item 5A is Resolution SPWA 2022-1, A Resolution of the Storero Public Works Authority Adopting an Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. Kristy, is this the same as we previously seen? It is. Counselors, is there, or excuse me, trustees, is there a motion on resolution, on the resolution?
I move to accept the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the resolution is adopted. Nothing further on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn SPWA. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the Storero City Council meeting. We are at item 14 on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the purposes requested by the city attorney?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, Storero City Council will now enter executive session.
We're back. Is there a motion to reconvene this -- or is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Second.
If we have a motion and a second to reconvene from executive session, please vote or please call the roll.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti, yes. Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
To approve three to zero.
We're now back in regular session. There's no action to be taken on executive session discussion.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti, yes. Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
We are adjourned three to zero.